And I'll call the May 22, 2017 special meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Nobody to torture for the pledge of allegiance, huh? All right, I'll do it all by myself. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
At this time, I'd like to invite our incoming Councilman Laird to come forward for introductions
and to be sworn in. And are we doing speech first, then judge? Judge first, okay. Judge Hand, come on down, you're the next lucky contestant.
You know, I tried the first jury trial in municipal court in 1973 or '04, it was the very first one, and guess who the judge was? His dad. So I think this is cool.
This is cool. Okay, is there anywhere special we want to do it for pictures and for the press? Up here? Kind of where we normally... Okay. Judge Hand is going to now issue the oath of office.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election.
Or appointment. Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Very good. Congratulations.
So Councilman Laird, you can take your official seat now. And now, from up here, you can introduce your friends and family and make a few comments. And the minutes of the meeting...
There were no impressions involved in my appointment, did I?
Let the meeting minutes reflect that Councilman Laird has now joined the meeting.
I'd like to thank the council for appointing me.
Welcome.
Do the best job I can. I'd like to introduce Judy Laird, who is the mayor of Casper, 1990. My former wife, who I love dearly. And I have my youngest son Damon Laird. And my two daughters Brittany and Kylie, sitting on the end. And Dee Laird, who is my son's wife. Amber Laird, who is my oldest son's wife, and my grandson Rogan. My oldest son is in Texas. My beloved cousin Sonny Rome. I've known him since before he was born. John Henley, one of the finest lawyers in town. My legal secretary and great friend Mary Burton, who's worked for me since she was 19. Another great legal scholar, one Rob Shively, who's a great friend of mine, we agree on nothing. Friend of mine Nick Gamborres. My significant other Rhonda Hopper. And welcome everyone else. Gary Winger, who I was asking when he was on the city council, and he wasn't sure, but he was here before some of you were born.
I don't think so.
So Councilman Johnson, you might have to show him the microphone and the buttons, unless we've already been through that, I'm not sure.
It's on now? Do I want it on all the time?
Up to you.
Depends on if you mutter under your breath or anything, you know? Okay. Thank you all for coming. I think that's a good-looking family there, Councilman Laird. Council will now discuss the resolution for the WHAM convention, because this is not on the consent agenda. It will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution of appreciation to the 62nd Annual Convention in Gillette, Wyoming, June 2017.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Huckabee, City Manager report.
Your honor, members of council, staff was directed by WHAM, which is the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, to review approximately these nine resolutions that are going to be brought forward at the WHAM conference in Gillette the end of this month, the first of June. And staff has put these together in resolution format for your consideration individually. So we would like for you to discuss these. Some of them may be of interest to the City of Casper to move forward on and to let our WHAM delegate move forward and present these on the behalf of the City of Casper, and some you may opt not to support. And so, again, the direction from WHAM was to discuss each of these individually, and I believe Councilman Powell will assist with some of the guidance on some of the parameters behind each of these issues.
Thank you. Council discussion.
I'll say this, thank you, your honor. I think this process, it's important to realize that sometimes an organization like WHAM will bring something forward to just initiate a discussion about the matter. It's not necessarily a red-hot issue or something where the organization is intent on seeing the resolution passed, but sometimes things just need to be part of the conversation. And so, please approach these with that understanding that WHAM believes that these things should be discussed and discussed openly and then voted on.
Thank you. Any further discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. And...
Did I hit the wrong button? Sometimes you just gotta hold it down.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the appropriation of state funding. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it's open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution supporting the Wyoming Association of Municipalities legislative agenda and the association's efforts in seeking appropriations of state funding for all 99 Wyoming cities and towns during the 2018 budget session of the Wyoming Legislature.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Powell. Discussion. It's okay.
Thank you, your honor. I think I got caught not doing my homework.
That budget book was a lot to get through.
By way of background, the... In the 2015 legislative session, things became very contentious as state funds were dwindling. And WHAM found itself in a position of trying to advocate for core funding that cities and municipalities had relied upon for many years that was now in jeopardy. And WHAM found itself defending essentially an effort to reduce that funding without much discussion or forethought. And we managed to squeak through without major cuts. Well, we did actually take a 40% cut with the complete removal of the consensus funding that we'd relied on for capital construction projects, but the core funding for operations remained in place. And the comment was, after the session, maybe you guys should come forward with a plan rather than just react to whatever comes up in the legislative session. And so, based on that, WHAM went through a very serious examination of how do you fund cities and municipalities, and how do other states do this? And so, based on that, a committee was formed, and they came up with a very impressive document that really looked at how funding has been accomplished in the municipalities over the years, and of course, points out to the reliance we've had on our mineral taxes. But also looked at the... Pointed out the lack of autonomy that cities have in the state of Wyoming as far as being able to generate... To basically tax their residents. But that... And in that document was a recommendation that the fifth cent tax be adopted statewide. And so, what this resolution does is says WHAM needs to be lobbying for core funding for the cities and municipalities so that we can continue to provide the services that people rely upon. And so, it really is nothing more than saying, stick up for us, because it's going to be another difficult session, and the things that we do are important.
Thank you, Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is really important to every city and every county in the state of Wyoming. Currently, something on the order of 2/3 of our total state income is derived from the minerals, extractive and extractive industries. Right now, the severance tax is paid on 100% of the value of the mine-mouth commodity that's coming out. Now, you and I are taxed at the rate of about 9.5% based on the actual price of our home or the actual market price of our home. But minerals tax are, in fact, it's 100% of the mine-mouth value. So that accounts for a huge piece of what we do. And the state of Wyoming has been very hesitant to expand any tax capability for any local governmental organization. So I think it's really important that we encourage them to do what they're trying to do here. Thank you.
Further discussion or amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the malt beverage tax. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution supporting any efforts to raise the tax on all malt beverages to the national average of 28 cents per gallon.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Powell. At this time, I'd like to invite Mike Reed to the podium. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. Mike Reed, 1650 Luger Drive, Casper. I'm not here advocating that you don't increase the tax, it makes no difference to me. My struggle is with your narrative in the resolution, where you say that you think the unit price is going to be effective in reducing excessive alcohol consumption, adolescent drinking, alcohol-impaired driving, and negative health consequences of alcohol. You further go on to say that alcohol abuse in Wyoming is among the highest in the nation, with alcohol being involved in 57% of all custodial arrests in 2015. Public intoxication counted for 12.86 of all arrests statewide, and driving under the influence of DUI accounted for 23.46. You're not going to stop those things by increasing the tax on alcohol. It doesn't make any difference what you do there. So if you just put in that narrative, whereas, the state and you need the money, it just seems it'd be smarter to me. This is just kind of hocus-pocus. It's also hocus-pocus when you're down, as WHAM, advocating for additional liquor licenses, because I can show you a study where additional liquor licenses also advocate for people to drink more. I think what you need to do is support more programs that make it tougher on people who are caught for multiple DUIs, because in this county, 48 of the 138 DUIs that have been recorded the first four months of this year are 2+ and many of them 3+. So I just think you need to just be honest with yourselves and say you need the money. I don't think anybody has a problem with that. And you're not going to kill anybody who's out there drinking anything. At the most, you're going to raise about $3.4 million additional statewide. Hopefully, you'll get some of that, but the way it is right now, it all goes to general fund. You'll make more money on the sales tax on food. So I just bring that to your attention. The second thing on that is, you're talking about changing the regulations on allowing 18-year-olds in bars? Good reason not to have them there. Is that's where alcohol consumption comes from. And just one other quick thing. I have a piece of paper I'd like to give to Mr. [inaudible]. And this will help you with Mr. Rowland, who obviously doesn't know the alcohol laws in New York. Because in New York, you can be 18 to work in a bar, bartend in a bar, and work in a package store as long as somebody 21 supervising you. So I just give you that for the heck of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Walsh.
Thanks, Mr. Reed. I've always relied on your advice a lot in this area. And I agree with you that the increase in taxes is probably not going to do anything to decrease the use. I support increasing the tax because I think this is probably the only tax left in the world that hasn't changed since prohibition ended in the early '30s. It only makes sense that we tax it. And it is because, of course, we need to find different revenue streams. This is a reasonable one to elevate. And I do believe the narrative about its sole purpose being to reduce alcohol problems probably is not the one we'd like to use if we can relay that to WHAM at all. I suspect that they used this similar argument for raising the tobacco taxes and reducing juvenile and general cigarette use. Don't know that it did that either, but it created that revenue stream for those preventative programs that are put out there based on that. That's all I have, thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Reed? Councilman Laird.
I agreed with you.
Thank you.
The thing I wondered, though, is, is there a point where raising all these taxes would cut down drinking? Would you have to get it... You'd have to get it pretty high, I'm assuming.
Oh, I think you'd have to get it scary high. It's like when you look at the number of DUIs that somebody has. When they're on their seventh DUI, they're not worried what you're going to do to them or what it costs. So I think you have to approach it differently. I don't think the price is going to do anything. I really don't. I mean, quite honestly, as a liquor dealer, I'm going to make more money. If you raise it, I'm going to get part of that raise. It's not going to change anything. Kids are going to drink, no matter what you do. We all did it, or I assume you all did it, I hate to say that. And Councilman Laird, you've been around a long time, you know what's going on in this.
I know what I did when I was a kid. The thing I'm wondering, you know, is I've always had this... I've always been in between a rock and a hard place. And that is, the state sells the alcohol, and they want you to buy as much as you can order. They want you to order trainloads if you can. And then, the way you make money is like anybody else. You sell a lot of your product, and you make profit. And yet, then we have a whole arm and a branch of the same government that is prosecuting everybody, for lack of a better term, over drinking. And I don't, you know, I don't know what the answer to all that is. But I think the way that was worded, that you pointed out, I thought, that's... Who dreamed that up? Because it's a way to sell that project, which I think it's a... I'm going to vote yes for it, but I agreed with you. And I don't know how I'd word that for it to be truthful, really. We need the money, we're going to raise the taxes, and it isn't going to dent who uses that liquor. It just isn't going to do it.
Isn't going to do it.
Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I agree with you. I think we should just call a spade a spade, because I don't think that the justification of trying to reduce underage drinking is plausible. Having worked with juveniles for many years, I think that until our federal and state governments stop cutting prevention funds in a multitude of areas, you're right, it's not going to change. Because I think, that's my opinion, that's the key, is prevention and education. So I'll support this, but I agree with you that I think that the verbiage should be taken out as-is.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Reed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes, and continue to support Safe Ride for us. That's another way to knock the DUIs down. Thank you.
Council discussion. Who drafted the resolution? Was it WHAM or was it us?
My understanding is it was drafted by WHAM. It came to my office about 11:30 on Friday with all the others for your packet. So there was no time to discuss these with council prior to them coming. I did have to filter through a couple of them with some of the sources, the other cities. Different cities submitted these. So Madam Mayor, to be very honest with you, I don't know what city may have submitted this one. I had the same question when I read it. I thought, it seems a little bit disjunct, the wherethes versus the request. But you could move to amend the wherethes if you would so desire. But we did not draft that locally.
Okay. So in theory, we can just modify it to what we want, send it to WHAM, and if they don't like it, fine.
I believe the whole idea of this is to give WHAM direction and where they should go. I don't know if the whereas clauses are really going to have a lot of import. I think the key is that you're asking for more revenue.
Okay.
But if you're more comfortable changing the language, I certainly have no problem with that.
Okay. Councilman Powell, and then Councilman Hopkins.
Councilman Hopkins was first.
Councilman Hopkins, then Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Bill, for that clarification. I guess I would like to move to modify the resolution and drop the third whereas that starts whereas alcohol abuse. I just don't think that's really germane to what our intent is here.
Agreed.
Do you want to do the second and third? Because the second one talks about adolescent drinking and negative health consequences. Councilman Powell.
I think the appropriate thing would be for council to direct me as the WHAM representative to request this change. It's not our resolution to amend. So, and I would be happy to do that. I agree. And I've never seen any evidence that the increased taxes reduces consumption. It does with cigarettes, though. There's very good evidence that high taxes reduce cigarette use. But anyway, I think that's fine, and I think we should be more honest about the purpose of this. But I would be happy to forward that if that's the wish of council for us to say we'd rather have this talk about the need for revenue versus the costs of alcohol use.
Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just looking at it, and it looks like we covered it. So I mean, if we could ask Councilman Powell just to do the historic stuff and raise it what we're looking for, without the smoke-and-mirrors type language.
Mr. City Attorney, how would that work if I have to sign off on this, but it's not to the form that council wants?
Well, first, number one, there was a motion made, but there was not a second made. So the motion may die for want of a second. In answer now to your question, this is the resolution that this council is signing and forwarding, but I don't believe the resolution goes really beyond WHAM, other than WHAM to advocate to the state legislature for changes. And so, you could probably send them a letter saying our intent is different, but the resolution does speak for itself.
And I'm sorry, I did lose your motion in the middle of that. Councilman Walsh.
So if this didn't move forward, if there wasn't a second on it, then we just showed no support on this issue, would there be a way that we could come back with our own wording to support it, or they adjust it at some point?
Madam Mayor, your choices are either to amend the resolution before you, is one option. Second option is not to approve the resolution and draft your own... And talk to WHAM and submit a different resolution later, if it's going to be timely. And I'm not sure what the timing for WHAM is on this. Or pass it as-is with Councilman Powell addressing WHAM as it moves forward, that we're not... Ultimately, you're not really in support of the conflict between the wherethes and the prayer language.
Okay, let me jump over to Councilman Laird, Huckabee, Walsh.
So, I don't know at what point, or if I'm too late now under the rules of order, I would second Mr. Hopkins' motion.
Okay. I might go back and just kind of re... Can I redo that so it flows better in the minutes?
Well, yeah, if you want, Madam Mayor, the motion would stand to strike the second and third whereas clauses from the current resolution.
Okay.
And that would be the amendment that's before council now with the second. That'd be open now for discussion.
Okay, so now we're going to have to discuss specifically just the amendment of taking those two paragraphs out. So council discussion on that.
So I... And I don't want to put anything in Mike's statement, but when I heard that read, if I was a liquor dealer, I wouldn't like the language. It just doesn't... It makes them sound harsh, like they're selling to minors and they're opening it up. And I know they don't do that. I don't know of a liquor dealer in Casper that wants to sell to a minor. And they're all concerned about it. So I just like language that if it applies to our city, that it's just nicer language towards our people, it's less harsh. Because I'm not too sure... Say her again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it may not have come down if it was nice, smooth language that didn't seem to be so condemning towards, I think, towards the liquor dealers. I mean, that's just my thought on it.
My suspicion is they felt they needed to justify the change.
Right.
Councilman Morgan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to... I think it's easy enough with the amendment as it stands. I won't support it if we don't have that amendment in there, but it's easy enough to solve this, I think, with the fact that it hasn't been raised since 1935. Let's bring it into the 21st century and act accordingly.
Okay. And I lost track over here, Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you, Mayor. I was also just going to second it, so...
Okay. Councilman Walsh, did you have anything else?
Not now, no thank you.
Councilman Hopkins?
No.
Councilman Powell?
I'm okay with the amendment.
Okay. So we're finished with discussion? Please cast your vote on the amendment to remove the two paragraphs? And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now, Madam Mayor, the amendment has passed. Now, you still need to take a vote on the resolution as amended.
Correct. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Do you really want to vote no? Okay, and please record the vote.
With Councilmember Johnson voting nay, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the food tax. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution requesting the Wyoming Association of Municipalities to support and advocate that the state of Wyoming Legislature reinstate taxation on food products for financial support to Wyoming cities, towns, and counties.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Walsh.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Do you not want to...
I'll second. No, I didn't want to second.
Okay.
I had skipped forward to the next one.
I will take a second from Councilman Powell. And at this time, I'd like to invite R.C. Johnson to the podium. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
I know, I'm just so used to evening.
Give us a little time. My name is R.C. Johnson. My residence, 450, that's a 4-5-0, North Washington Street, Casper, Wyoming. And I am here asking you to absolutely oppose this resolution. I remember a couple of months ago, when I came before this body, asking about the need to... to diversify our economy. And if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Hopkins assured me that the fiscal house of Casper was in such good shape that we would not be seeing any diminishing of services. And yet, this resolution suggests that you need the money. And so you're going for a reinstatement of the tax on food. You know, I connect dots real good. One of the things that I connect dots with has to do with nutrition, health, mental health, and behaviors. Because when you start talking about adding tax to the food costs, you're also adding expenses that many times families cannot afford if they're going to have nutritious food. You're talking about the elimination of fruits and vegetables, and the increase in those noodles, the ramen noodles, that fill people up, but the nutrition level is very low. When you look at what happens to those children when they go to school, who do not have adequate nutrition for their brains to be well-fed, you're asking for a world of trouble in behaviors. I cannot fathom, that's going back to a time when, especially the elderly, and let's not forget about them, when the elderly used to purchase cat food and dog food because they could not afford the regular food. I don't know how many of you remember that era. We're also talking about the cuts that are scheduled to come in Medicaid and the food stamps. So now what are you saying to people? We want you to pay more for the food that you need for the nutrition of your body, for the nutrition of your mind, for the nutrition of your mental health. These dots connect. There's a reason that we try to advocate for people having nutritious intake into their body. Then what do you do to those agencies that help to support the poor? Agencies that are looking for donations? Well, what are those donations going to be looking like? And how much more support do the poor need in order to feed themselves adequately? I'm not even talking about well, but adequately. Now, the reason I found out about this meeting today was because I was looking for the next Tuesday that you were going to meet, so that I could bring the presentation from the American Association of University Women on Equal Pay Day. And tomorrow is equal payday for mothers, because mothers make even less in the marketplace. And when you consider adding tax to a mother's paycheck and what she has to deduct, you are looking at a wholesale problem for families. Because most of the time, the mothers are the ones who are having to shop, and we have a lot of mothers who are heads of household, which means that you're putting extra burden, extra stress. And stress leads to even more problems in the family dynamic. So I ask you to consider what you said to me a few months ago, and how this fiscal house was in such good order, and reject any possibility of supporting this particular resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins and then Councilman Walsh.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes?
Just so you understand, I voted to introduce this. I will not support this.
Thank you. Because see, I'm bringing the words and I'm going to shove them right.
No, I know. No problem. But in any case, great comments, and I agree with you 100% that to put taxes back on food would be a real step backwards. And I will not be supporting this issue, but I just wanted to get it before us for discussion.
Thank you.
Councilman Walsh.
I agree that the bottom line is we do need funding as the state, but, which translates to the city, right? My problem with this is, you know, food is an item that everybody needs. This last one, you know, I'm fine with raising the alcohol taxes. We don't need alcohol. That's a luxury item. Food is not. And at this point, I want to find other options for that funding revenue. Not saying that it would never happen, but I can't support it either.
Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you. I agree with every word you said. I think when our economy takes a turn, the way that it has, some of the first services to get cut are social service agencies. And so we have people that are food insecure, we have people who are being paid insufficient wages that causes them to be below the poverty line, and adding an increase to their tax for food is only going to further that and increase the need for other agencies that have already been cut. And it's a vicious cycle that is frustrating to me that governments can't figure out the solution to, because it seems pretty obvious to me. I am one of those head of household, single moms that stood in line at food banks when my daughter was very young, and so I absolutely will not support this in any way.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. R.C. Johnson? Councilman Laird?
Two things. Who, where did this develop that was brought to us in the first place?
They can't hear you.
I don't know where this developed, that it was placed in front of us in the first place. I do think one thing, our economy has taken probably a pretty good nosedive, ma'am, since he probably said what he said. And I've never been in favor of taxing food. I don't understand that. And I don't understand how bad we need the money.
So this is coming from the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, which is kind of like our lobbying arm to the legislature. These are their proposals that they're sending to us to say, we may want to talk about this. Do you guys agree? So we certainly don't have to support this at all. We're just, we're giving WHAM the feedback of whether or not we want to discuss certain topics. And so if we all vote no, then we're sending the message that Casper is not going to go this direction, or we don't support that discussion.
But the entity that would pass the tax would be the state legislature.
Correct.
And the last time we had one of these huge nosedives, they considered taxing things that would, I couldn't sleep at night when I heard about them. And one of them was food. And then it turned around. The oil and gas cranked back up, and it all went away, and people forgot about it. But, and I'm hoping that's what's going to happen here. So, thanks for pointing that out.
If I may, they now have that entity called Endow, supposedly going to diversify our economy. And when I came before this body before, I was very concerned that we were at a waiting point too late, because the diversification of our economy was well overdue. And fortunately, Councilman Hopkins pointed out the foresightedness that the city of Casper had for having the funds set to be able to weather the storm. But we still need to do that. And so when I come here, I know you all have connections with our state legislators. And so I come also speaking truth to power and asking that you lobby in behalf of the true diversification of our economy.
And I can only tell you, I'm hoping the storm we're going to have doesn't turn into a tsunami, because that's really bothering me, as to how big this storm is, because you got a rainy day fund, and it might rain itself out.
Well, I understand what that situation is, and so I'm not, I'm not here to necessarily talk into going into the rainy day fund forever, forever. And there really has been some dipping into the fund. But we also should be looking at that true, which states actually have an effective diversification of the economy, so we don't constantly go through boom and bust. And looking at the possibilities of models that are out there that we might be able to take a look at, not only as a city, but as a state.
Councilman Morgan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks, R.C., for coming tonight and you speaking.
What is this tonight business?
It's dark in here.
It's habit.
I feel like it's nighttime. Anyways, thanks for being here. Since you mentioned the Endow initiative by the governor, the executive sessions happened, I think, last week or two weeks ago. And you're right, you know, we do have the rainy day funds, but, you know, do we all want to be here and be known as counsel, spending down the reserves, and then being presented from the governor's office, saying this is what this municipality has to do to diversify? And then us saying, well, we no longer have the funds, we spent them all down to that 16.6%. So it's, there's some tough choices that we have, and hopefully we can make the right decisions to see what's essential and to be in a position to actually take advantage of an opportunity that presents itself.
I'm hoping that you'll also be drawing up some plans in this city, because there's a lot of talent in this city to look at economies and how best to do it. Seems to me we should be tapping into that talent bank. And I'm not advocating spending down.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We have one more speaker that didn't get a chance to sign up. So, the chair would entertain a motion to suspend council rules to allow one speaker to come up and speak.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huckabee, seconded by Councilman Johnson.
Not debatable.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
I love that you can read my mind. Representative Ann Robinson, come on down. Good afternoon. There, I got it.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor and members of the council, and I am former Representative Ann Robinson.
You'll always be a representative.
I am the representative who authored and was the primary sponsor on the legislation that originally removed or exempted groceries from sales tax. And there was a lot of discussion over the 10 years I was in the legislature. I brought legislation for eight years before it finally passed. But the thing that I think the legislature finally recognized was how regressive tax on food is. It, I'm really dry right now, so, sorry. It is probably, oh, thank you so much. It's probably the most regressive tax there is. And the reason for that is, as someone mentioned, it's the most basic need of all of the people, regardless of your financial stature. But it hits the poorest people the hardest. And I'm not talking about people who are receiving food stamps, because the federal government prohibits tax being charged on food, bought with food stamps. The people that it hits the hardest are the working poor, which we have a lot of those in Nautrona County, people who are working for minimum wages, people who have both, both parents working and raising children. They're working for minimum wages, sometimes working two and three jobs and paying a lot of money for childcare in addition to that. There are only 45 states that charge sales tax on anything. There are five states that don't have sales tax at all. But there are three states that fully tax groceries, and those states are Alabama, Mississippi, and South Dakota. And the other states, the other 47 states, have found other ways to finance their state government without taxing groceries. So I would ask you to reject this proposal. I think that it's in the best interest of all of the citizens that you represent, and it just doesn't make sense. There has to be another place to raise funds to operate the government. And we have had boom, bust, boom, bust, and we have always recovered. So, I think that's probably about all I had to say. Oh, the one other thing that was mentioned was the proposals to cut the programs in the national budget that's being proposed right now. The proposal is to cut $193 billion from the food stamp program. And when they do that, that means those people who are cut, which it's over a 25% cut in the people who are receiving food stamps, when that happens, those people will be losing not only that benefit, but if this passes, the people in Wyoming will also be having to pay the extra five or six, or, you know, depending on the county's percent on their food as well. So they're going to get a double whammy with that. And I think that your recommendations going to the legislature should hold some water in, you should be able to curb their idea to do this.
Questions or comments? Councilman Huckabee.
Just wanted to say thank you for your work in legislature, and especially this. I think that there are a lot of people that are very grateful and have benefited greatly from the elimination of that tax, so thank you.
Thank you. I do have people walk up to me in grocery stores and the mall and different places and say, thank you. You've helped my kids, who are raising kids. Or, and some of the other people that are on food stamps that I don't think everyone realizes are senior citizens who may only get $10, $20 a month, but it makes a difference to them. And if they lose that and they pay tax on their food, too, then it's a double whammy again for them. So, I hope that you're able to talk them out of this bad idea.
All right. Thank you for coming this afternoon.
You're very welcome, and thank you all for the work that you do.
Okay, counsel discussion. Councilman Powell.
Your Honor, no question that the food tax is a regressive tax. Just by way of history, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Robinson, but this was, this exemption was put in place during a period when the state basically had so much money they didn't know what to do with at all. Are you going to correct me?
There is never a time that they're going to admit that.
Well, historically, compared to our current circumstances, and it was passed at that time, with the understanding from the state legislature that the municipalities would receive some other source of funding to be determined that would make up for the lost revenue. Well, guess what? That never happened. And so this isn't, and you're, R.C., you are correct, we are in much better shape financially than most municipalities, probably all the other municipalities, because of fiscal responsibility and savings that we've achieved. But that's not the case around the state. In fact, with the loss, the potential loss of direct distribution, there is a real possibility that some of our smaller towns are going to cease to exist. And so, and harkening back to Councilman Hopkins' remarks about supporting WHAM's efforts to advocate for adequate funding for municipalities, we have not faced the hard facts that we have relied upon this severance tax revenue, which was in the article today likened to an allowance, which I thought was probably a good way to think about it. And it's always easy to argue against a tax. That's what happens. The Revenue Committee met three months ago, and they looked at all these exemptions. And guess what? Every time they looked at an exemption, some lobbying group came before them and said, oh, no, you can't remove this exemption, because all these horrible things will happen if you do that. And guess how many exemptions they removed? Zero, because of conversations like the one we're having right now, where people say, well, this is a bad tax, because these bad things are going to happen if you do this. a bad tax because these bad things are going to happen if you do this. But no one who ever advocates for, against a tax ever seems to come forward and say, well, you should tax this way instead. And so that's the dilemma that we are in as a state and as a municipality is that people argue against taxes but don't provide a solution for how we are going to fund our municipalities. Now, I'm also going to vote against this because it is a regressive tax. But we've got to get out of this deal we have going where everyone argues against instituting a tax for basic services. Because we, we know now that we cannot rely on the way that we've been funding our, our services up to now. It's essentially unraveling. And so I agree with everything that's said. You cannot argue for a food tax without coming across like, I don't know, Scrooge or worse. But that, that funding mechanism was never replaced by the state legislature. And now we are, we are paying the price for that. We have got to come up with some long-term solutions as a state to how we're going to fund state services and fund cities and municipalities, hopefully without a food tax. But again, it's easy to argue against tax.
Madam Mayor, I, I would like to address the backfill issue. When the legislation that I sponsored was only good for a two-year period because it was included in the budget because they kept killing things every other way. So it was good for two years. And it did have the provisions in there to hold the local governments harmless. So the, the person who sponsored the legislation that made it permanent two years later did not include that provision. And that's what happened to the municipality. So it, it was meant when it, when it was passed in the first place to always hold the local governments harmless. I just wanted to clarify that.
Anyone else? Councilman Laird?
I'll get over this as time goes on. I gotta work the lawyer out of me. Thank you very much for the work you've done in the legislature because it was, it was great. And nobody wants to tax food. Now, on the other hand, I don't like taxing anything. And most of the, most of the people in my ward don't either. If I came down here and started saying I was going to tax things, this, me running again, I might as well not run because most Wyoming people don't want taxes of any kind or raised. We have to do it occasionally. And I'm big enough to do it if it has to be done. But you've made your point here, I'm quite certain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And it wasn't new to try to get it off. My father was in the legislature from Hot Springs County between the late 50s and, and the late 70s. And at that time, he and some others, including Edna's Kimball Wilkins from Neutrona County, tried very hard to get food exempted from sales tax. And it just didn't happen. All of those years, it went like 50 years, you know, and didn't get done. And that's one thing that I, I feel like the legislature really did right in 2006.
Okay. Councilman Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question for you, Representative. Reasonable taxes are a necessity. I, I, I don't, I'm not going to support this, but this, that doesn't mean that I'm, I don't support taxes across the board. And we may have to come up with something that we'll have to tax. We can't talk about providing social services or anything and not talk about taxes. That's where it comes from. So I think we have to keep in mind, things need to be taxed. We need to tax those things that make sense. But we can't be the people that say, well, there'll be no taxes, society will go on just as it is or even be improved. That takes public money. That's what we're spending. This is how we gather it. So.
I guess one, if I may, one quick way to look at it, Wyoming has spoiled itself by literally exporting two-thirds of our tax bill for going on 50 years. And sooner or later, that's going to have to stop. We, we just can't continue to export our tax bill. And that's what happens every time you charge taxes on mineral. So we're going to start taxing ourselves to get her done.
Further council discussion on this topic. I'm assuming no amendments. I have a suspicion I know how this is going to go. Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting nay, motion fails.
Thank you, ladies. Council will now discuss the resolution for non-transient lodging, lodging tax exemption. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it'll be open for discussion by the council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution to the Wyoming Association of Municipalities advocating legislation to remove the non-transient lodging tax exemption.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Powell. Discussion.
Your honor, just so everyone is aware, this was introduced by, by Rollins. And it, I think we're being a little more honest with this resolution in terms of its purpose. It is strictly about a revenue source that has been unavailable due to this exemption that has been made for energy companies that use temporary lodging for periods of more than 30 days. And I think the thinking is that it created an unfair advantage for one industry. But Rollins saw a significant loss of revenue due to that exemption. And asked, asked for WHAM to put this on their agenda for discussion.
Councilman Huckabee?
Thank you. I was just going to ask Charlie to clarify that. So thank you.
I just had a question.
Councilman Laird?
Why did they give them the exemption in the first place?
I don't, I don't know for sure, but I think based on the discussions, I think this was really an economic development measure to try to stimulate the energy industry and, and help them reduce their costs so they could be more productive.
Is it for, was it for the fact that a lot of people just lived in hotels for extended periods, like six months, eight months?
Well, more than 30 days.
That's pretty much it.
So if there, do we have, do we have a lot of that in Casper? Of people that are not working that are living in hotels that could, it could affect their housing if they got taxed?
Well, we, we had a lot more of it two years ago.
Yeah, we did. I just wonder where it is now.
Councilman Hopkins?
I think it might even originate and have roots back in the days when you had people camped out along the river when they were building the power plant in Rock Springs. And it just kind of morphed, I guess, if you will, into having arrangements where if there's not a lot of good apartments available or reasonable apartments available, this was a way to give a break to workers that needed to stay in hotels. And I generally have some opposition to taxes that go to one industry, which this one pretty much does. But on the other hand, I also have a stronger feel about another one of the exemptions that Charlie talked about. It's, we just exempt too many things.
Well, we, we tax them because people come into town and they leave. And so that's how we.
That's right.
That's how we make it work. I just wonder how many, you know, I don't have a clue of how many people this might impact negatively. And I, there's a part of me that wonders about that. I mean, if we have a lot of people that are living in these kind, this kind of housing, and I see these old motels and people are living there, I don't know if it impacts. I don't know. How, how much would it, what would the tax be if they, if they remove this exemption? I mean, so you have a hundred dollar a night room. How much tax would they pay if you remove the exemption? Does anybody know that?
Councilman Powell.
Five bucks?
In Casper.
Yeah, you're right. That's what it is.
So, I said, you know, that, that adds up. I just don't know. But I'm, I don't want to abstain from anything either, but I'm, I just don't, I just don't have a clear picture in my mind. How long has this exemption been in effect, for instance?
Since the lodging tax started, I believe. But Bill, is that?
I really don't know the answer to that without researching that.
Yeah, I can't tell either. The good news is we can give our feedback to Councilman Powell and the concerns because I didn't even think about the aspect that you're referring to so that you can pass that along at the meeting. Councilman Huckabee?
I can speak to that. Having worked at the Housing Authority previously in 2014, I believe there was 237 homeless children in the school district, living in places that are not meant to be housed in, tents down by the river, abandoned buildings, et cetera. So my concern with this tax, on one hand, I do see that it would generate revenue from an industry that has a lot of revenue. But on the other hand, the, the city and the county directly fund community action partnership, which then distributes funds to other social service agencies and often provides vouchers for homeless individuals to stay in hotels. So I wonder if increasing the tax is going to decrease the amount of people that are going to be assisted when they are receiving housing vouchers. And that concerns me.
Yeah, I, I share the same concern, but I, and again, I think we'd have to research this. If we have Mr. Sweeney here, he could tell us. But I believe if, if it works like food tax, if they would pay with a state voucher, then they wouldn't pay that tax. But I honestly can't tell you if that's correct. I.
Madam Mayor, there, one thing that occurs to me and it always, I always hear this. This only impacts our less fortunate people. So somebody has to be their voice. And I don't know how it affects those people. I don't know how this and us, whether we pass this or, or turn it down, really doesn't mean much other than it sends a little message of some sort, but.
Councilman Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I believe that people it affects the most is, is not that lower income group, but the oil companies that are renting entire rooms of motels. And they have the funds, they have the means, and they're not paying their way. I, I don't know for certain, but it seems like if it is a state program that the state, just like us, doesn't ever pay taxes on anything. Think of the energy industry that has gone through here. That number of, you know, five times outweigh what the, the homeless population is using in a motel room. And that's where I think the biggest impact is going to be.
And if that's true, then I agree with it, removing it. I just don't know what it's doing. I just honestly can't sit here and say, and I, I guess maybe that doesn't make any difference. I sure like to know.
Right. Councilman Morgan and then Councilman Huckabee?
Thank you, Mayor. Originally, having the mindset of the oil field, plenty of my friends have stayed in hotels for longer than two years. They have over a million Hilton Honor Points or, or Holiday Inn points, and they can stay wherever they'd like. But having the aspect that Councilman Laird has brought up about less fortunate people, I don't know how that would affect them. And at this point, I feel that it would be important for us to perhaps research this further or ask WHAM to actually come to us with a specific study in why we should perhaps support this and how that will affect people from across the straight state.
Councilman Huckabee?
Thank you. My thought was perhaps we could amend it to exclude taxation on any county, city, state-provided vouchers to indigent people. Or again, have Charlie take the feedback back to WHAM.
Or, or just, I agree with Chris. I think we ought to tax the oil companies and, and leave the other people alone. I don't know if we can do that. But we could say it because that's what people think generally anyway.
Councilman Powell, do you think that when you're at this meeting, and I believe you're going to, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. That if we pass this, we can say with the caveat that we wouldn't necessarily support it should it impact those in need? Or we, we would need to see more data to feel comfortable with full support?
I mean, I, we certainly could request that it be amended.
When's the meeting, Charlie?
It's 31st, first and second.
So we will not have another regular council meeting before that?
As follow-up, I can say that the motivation behind this is exactly what Councilman Walsh expressed.
I think the legislature's going to pass it, but we've got to stick up for our people in town who can't afford it to some extent. That's my only thinking here.
Just, just, just by way of follow-up, if I may, sorry to interrupt, but, and, and I think part of the motivation is to do exactly what Councilman Hopkins said, is we've got to address all these exemptions. There's, there's a boatload of them. And each one nickels and dimes us. And I just think if you're going to have a sales tax, have a sales tax. We don't tax professional services. I, I think we're probably one of the only states in the country that doesn't tax professional services. What's that all about?
It's one I don't want to have happen.
I'm sure you don't. And I, it affects my business as well. But we, yeah, and there's always an argument for every exemption, but the, but the collective impact is deadly to us as far as providing services. So I, I think we, and then I think that's what WHAM is doing is saying, okay, here's an exemption we could, we should talk about.
Okay. Councilman Morgan?
We have plenty of time before the next session. So if we do choose to actually vote no, or, you know, we could always create our own amendment at any point in time. We could arrange this in what makes sense to everybody. So in an agreement. So I guess just to move it along, if, if anybody would like to entertain this, I make a motion to table this to the June 6 regular council meeting, at which point we can either amend this or discuss it further. Or I guess we could vote it down. But that's my motion to table it to the June 6 meeting.
Second. If, if, just for purposes of clarification, I would suggest that that be clarified as a motion to postpone to that date. That way you'll automatically come back on that date.
Perfect.
Okay, so we are postponing to June 6. We've got a movement here, a second by Councilman Laird. You reading my mind again?
Not debatable.
Okay, please.
If I recall, a motion to postpone is not a motion to table. I didn't bring my cheat sheet today, but you may debate if you'd like.
I will. I think that's a bad idea. We have a WHAM meeting coming up in a week and a half. And these, the WHAM only meets twice a year. And so this is, this is, this is, these will be discussed then. And I think if, if Casper decides not to support a, one of these resolutions, that will have an impact on that discussion.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yeah, I like the idea of going, getting more information. And I think this question could be answered. And we would certainly have the option within the next few weeks to change our opinion. But I still think we ought to go ahead and, well, I will support this actually. But I think we can get information. Should we come back, I'm sure that we can pass another resolution saying what we think we need to say. If in fact, the tax is collected on vouchers that are given out, that's a little different animal. I think they'd have to do something about that. But by and large, it's an exemption and I think it ought to go away.
Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to remember, you know, in January, shortly before any of the votes, WHAM would reach out to council members specifically saying, could you please let us know how you feel about a particular item on the agenda or for the joint appropriations meeting, committee meetings before they went to session? So the fact that they meet twice a year, I, I think that's irrelevant. They continue to reach out to us and they, they value our feedback. So at which point that we're able to provide that with a better answer, I think would be appropriate.
Councilman Laird?
I, I tend to agree with Jesse's thinking on it. My, my problem
My, my problem is I don't feel indebted to them to vote on their deal if they don't provide me enough information. I can't vote on things that, that in my, in good conscience because it's WHAM. I mean, I need to know why is it, why is it, I, I know why it hissed that they want to remove all these exemptions. But I've been through this before. Because I know when they'll come after my, my injured clients and want to tax their, their settlements. And we fought that. I fought all those battles. And fortunately in Wyoming, we haven't had to do that. But I don't like being given limited information and having it phrased in such a way that, that, that they're pulling you into the vote. Give us all the information. We're smart people. We'll make a good decision for our people in this town. That's all I ask.
Anyone else? So we are voting on the amendment to postpone to June 6. So please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With councilmembers Laird, Johnson, Morgan and Pacheco voting aye, motion fails.
Now we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on that? Councilman Huckabee.
I make a motion to amend to include not taxing vouchers or indigent persons, something to that effect.
Second.
Discussion.
As, as I understand, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Those are already exempted. These are nonprofits. They don't pay sales tax.
That would be my thought, too.
Councilman Walsh.
I believe that's exactly the case. But since I only believe that, I would like to make a resolution so that we know that that's the intent and that's what it says.
Your Honor, this isn't a sales tax. This is lodging tax. Oh, thank you.
Councilman Huckabee.
I know that in Nitrona County, that, that is the case. But there are other counties within the state that the way they distribute those vouchers is different and the entities through which they are issued are different. And so because we don't have a uniformed process for issuing those vouchers, I think that's why it's important is because while it may not affect our county, it could have impact on other counties.
And Councilman Powell, that debate would occur at the WHAM meeting where each city could represent how it's going to impact them. Okay, so I have a motion to try to exempt taxing indigent. Did I have a second on that? You seconded, Councilman Walsh seconded. We discussed. Mr. City Attorney, is there any, is that, can you word that in a way that...
Yes, I, Madam Mayor, I can. I believe the motion is to the effect that the resolution would, pardon me, would support removing the transit lodging tax exemption with the exception of not allowing taxation of vouchers for indigent individuals, is how I would phrase it. So I would assume that would be the intent of the motion so made by Councilman Humphrey.
Okay.
Excuse me, Councilman Huckabee, pardon me.
He always, he just says it so good. Okay. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Councilmember Laird voting no, nay, motion passes.
What do you do when you accidentally push the wrong button?
You just switch it over and they'll, they'll catch it. Did you want to vote yes?
I did.
Okay.
All members voting aye, motion to amend passes.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Now, Madam Mayor, the main motion to approve the resolution as amended is before the council.
And I assume there's no further discussion? Please cast your vote. You might have to push your button harder. Please record the vote.
Councilmember Morgan voting nay, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the lien and assessment process because this is not on the consent agenda. It'll be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution to the Wyoming Association of Municipalities advocating legislation to clarify the lien and assessment process by which municipal expenses for abating nuisances and dangerous buildings may be recovered.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Discussion. Councilman Powell.
Your Honor, this was actually our resolution. And I believe our city attorney pretty much wrote this. Am I correct about that, Mr. Lubin?
Actually, I did not write this one, but I wrote the memo that I believe was used to produce this.
Much of the language, though.
Yeah, would be correct.
Yes. And could we call on Mr. Lubin to tell us the reasoning for this and, and, and save me from having to...
Please.
Madam Mayor, please the council. This is probably my fourth attempt over 15, 16 years to try to get some meaningful legislation in place for municipalities. Other cities have faced the same, and I'll talk about the problem here in a second, have faced the same dilemma that Casper faces, Rawlins in particular. And how this happens, or currently what happens, if we knock down a building, it's a dangerous building. Let's take a motel as an example. We incur all the costs of tearing that building down, all the asbestos removal if there is or hazardous substances. To knock down a given building could cost municipality anywhere between $100,000 to $300,000,000. Currently, however, the legis, the statutes in the state of Wyoming do not allow a county clerk to spread that lien that you will assess for those costs against the property value, and it will not become a priority lien. And so what happens in an example, we have a lot of properties in Wyoming that are financed by out-of-state banks. And to give you an example, let's say you have an old motel and an out-of-state bank, or even an in-state bank for that matter, holds a $500,000 lien on that property as a first lien on the property. However, the motel has turned into a dilapidated condition and in its current condition with, say, asbestos or hazardous substances, is only worth $50,000. And now it's abandoned. The lien holder has no, no incentive to tear that building down at its cost to try to recoup its cost, but yet it's sitting there with a first lien. It's cheaper for that lien holder to sit back and let the city come in and declare it to be a dangerous building and abate it and tear it down. So and then my example, let's say that when the building is torn down and the building's gone, that the lot would have a value of $300,000, but it's going to cost us $200,000 to tear it down. If we tear the building down currently, under current law, and we try to foreclose our lien, the bank will come in and pay off their lien or buy the property back for the cost of their lien, which is $500,000. City would have to bid $500,000 in order to take possession of property that's now only worth $300,000, but we already spent $200,000 to knock the building down. Consequently, we've got $700,000 in the building that we can only recoup $300,000 for. City loses, or the taxpayers, I should say, lose $400,000 in this process. That enriches the bank, who now walks off with their $500,000, who never took any incentive to make sure their property was maintained or taken care of. What I would like to propose, or have proposed in the past, is that if we knock a building down after we go through all the due process steps, and there's a very intricate due process step here, the mortgage holder is notified. They have the right to come in and abate the building if they want to. If they don't, we knock it down. Council determines those costs, assesses those costs. Those costs are sent over to the county clerk. It's spread against the property as a tax lien. And that tax lien is only subject to the payment of real estate taxes to the state. So when we go in and sell this property, the state gets their real estate taxes. We recoup our costs of demolition. Assuming the property's worth $300,000, we get our $200 back. Someone else benefits with the $100,000 who buys the property and hopefully moves it to a higher and better use. Right now, most of the states, I shouldn't say most of the states, but I, jurisdiction I came from had this type of a system that prevented unjust enrichment of poor investments being made into properties or into derelict properties, casting those costs onto the taxpayers to have to recoup. The taxpayers shouldn't have to foot that kind of a bill, in my opinion. And it has prevented us, in many cases, from making decisions to knock down buildings occasionally. Not so much for Casper, I should say. But I can tell you, Rawlins has made that decision with a couple motels in their downtown area that are boarded up and closed up because they're, the liens are held by banks in California. Rawlins simply can't afford to take that hit, knock those buildings down. That's the purpose behind this. But I will tell you that I've failed in three prior attempts to, to move this forward. We did have a bill sponsored in the legislature, I think, three years ago with Rawlins. It was, it did not come out of committee. So I would hope that this would get some impetus behind it, especially in a time when cities are facing the very financial downturn that we have. And if I may to be brief, the more of the financial downturn we have, the more we have a chance of derelict properties occurring within the city that we need to abate. So that's the purpose behind it. I don't have a chart to show you how those costs work out, but that's how we end up, like, really having the short end of the stick in the deal. So if you have any questions about that, but that's the, that's the purpose of it.
Okay. Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, so it's kind of a slumlord discouragement legislation, is it?
You could say that, but it also gives us the ability, once we knock a building down, conceivably its value comes up. The asbestos is gone, the building is gone.
The land may be worth more than the building anyway.
And you know, this is becoming more of, yes, and more of a problem with people going into derelict motels and manufacturing meth because meth now permeates the entire building and the entire building becomes derelict and has to be knocked down. And so we face it not only just by building degradation, but also what people are doing inside those buildings that even contributes to a higher hazard and a higher cost of abatement.
Further discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the public improvements contracts and forms of guarantee. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution requesting the Wyoming Association of Municipalities to support and advocate legislation to amend Wyoming Statute 151113A regarding contracts for public improvements and 151113F, forms of guarantee.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion.
As I understand, thank you, Your Honor.
Please.
I understand that the reasoning behind this is to, and this was another proposal by the city of Rawlins, basically to help them reduce costs by benefiting from the volume discount that the state achieves when it purchases vehicles.
Other questions, discussion?
Could you explain to me how that's going to work?
No.
It sounds weird to me.
I mean, I wish I could, but that's how it was explained to me. Is it basically...
Is it going to make every car dealer in the state mad at us?
I couldn't say.
Go ahead, sorry.
I can't tell you for certain. You have the state bid process, and I, and I know here, at least when we were buying computers, if we wanted something off the state bid list, we wouldn't have to go out to bid per our typical internal policies. State will get a bid on vehicles. If there's something on that state bid that matches it, we were able to use it. And other than that, we would bid our own. Say we had a specialty item or we, something, the state bids and the state availability were only certain times of the year. So I don't know why it would make a difference in Rawlins if that's the state bid process, except formalize it for them. I don't, I'm not sure.
Would, it would apply to everybody, wouldn't it?
Well, we used it, I know, here in Casper. But I don't know the depth of what, we, I know I've used it on vehicles myself and on, we use it on computer equipment. Madam Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Councilman Walsh is correct. What we do with personal property, which we can do because there's no restriction in the state statute. Under, under state statute, however, there is a restriction that all new vehicles have to be bid by a municipality. And so I believe, if I'm understanding from what I've been able to read about this, is the intent is if the state goes out and, say, bids three-quarter ton pickups of a certain type, certain motor size, all the dealers can come in and bid on that, and that bid would be good for a certain period of time. And then, but there's no limit to how many can be bought under the bid. And so then the cities could come in and say, okay, we want two. The state wants 50 whatever. And then the dealer would fulfill that based upon that prorata per-vehicle cost. But all the dealers presumably would have the right then to place their bids under the state bid of what they would put in in order to sell those vehicles through their fleet management program.
Okay. Other discussion, questions or amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the creation of utility and municipal services lien authority. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it'll be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution to create utility and other municipal services lien authority for municipalities and joint power boards.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huckabee, seconded by Councilman Powell. Discussion. We all turn to Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I'm, perhaps our city attorney can help me with this one as well. But there are municipalities in Wyoming, Pine Glos being one, that own their own utilities. And so there are costs that they would like to recover via a lien process. And that's about all I know.
Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Madam Mayor, I'm not as familiar with this one as I was the prior one, but I think the idea of this is the same, where you have landlords with properties, as an example, and utility bills remain unpaid. There's no way to really put a lien on the property that's not otherwise subject to the first or second lien holder out there. So it becomes really impossible to collect those. And I think you see it, and we have to write off a large number of unpaid utility bills where people leave town and take off. It's not feasible for us to try to enforce that as a lien. We try to go through collection agencies and those types of things, but we don't have a very effective tool for either joint powers boards or municipalities in order to enforce that. If you have the lien or at least the threat of it, you can go to the landlord and say, you need to pay up because if we foreclose, we get a priority over your lien holder. Now, that's easier said than done with a banking lobby, and they need to be convinced in the whole process of this that, that this is, has a, has a good viable end to it, just like the prior one. But I think otherwise, the taxpayers, again, are subsidizing the unpaid utility bills of joint powers boards and, and cities.
And if I may follow up, were you going to say? I, I think that's exactly right, is that the, the idea was that any time there are unpaid bills, the rest of us have to pick up the, the, the cost, and that all gets spread out amongst the responsible people that are paying their bills.
Councilman Laird.
I don't like lien laws. And the reason I don't like lien laws is because it makes it too easy to collect money that isn't owed. And most people can't go hire lawyers to fight wrongful claims. And I, I've seen them. Wyoming is one of the few states that, that, for instance, Colorado has a lien law on hospital bills. So if you, if you, if your child gets killed in a car wreck by somebody else and you have $150,000 in bills, they come after the parents, who caused nothing, who lost the child. And now there, there's all kinds of injustices that happen with lien laws. And I just don't like lien laws. And if these guys aren't smart enough to, when they sign somebody up to get a, to get power, they could have it in their agreement that we agree to allow you to place a lien on us. That can be done. I don't know why they don't do it. There's, there's some doctors here in town that do that. You go in there, they make you sign all kinds of things. But that's, that's a contract between the parties. between the parties. Most people don't understand what they're signing, of course, but I'm just kind of against, I, it just makes it, I've seen a strain of things come through here that impacts people that cannot defend themselves. Of course, if you say a big bank owns some big building, and they haven't paid the electrical bill on it, I'm gonna guess you're gonna be able to get that without a lien, but why does, why don't these utility companies, when they sign these people up, you've gotta sign this form? Let them handle their own collection, their own problems. Why do we want to put it on everybody else? That's my thought.
Anyone else? Further discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With Councilmember Laird voting nay, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the optional general revenue tax. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it'll be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution to create an optional general revenue tax for a specified purpose.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Powell, discussion.
Your Honor, I think this was, this came from Jackson, and they want the authority to present to the public some additional taxing options that would be voted on in their municipality. And there are certain caps in state law as far as how, as far as additional taxes and, and, and their specified purposes, and so this would allow the towns to put before the public taxes that would also be allowed, would be used for operations. If they, if the people don't want it, they don't have to pass it.
Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you. So Charlie, would this be similar to our optional one cent?
Yes, in terms of it would go before the public, and it allows it to be done in increments of one-tenth of a percent.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
I just need a clarification. So they're asking us to agree that we can put more taxes on our people, and we don't know really what they are?
No, Councilman, I'm sorry, but this, this is really just allowing municipalities the, the latitude to requ, to put before the public a tax option that the state law does not currently allow.
So if there's a specific project that they want completed, they could put it before the voters, we want to pass this tax to fund this project, and if the voters say yes, then it passes, or if they say no, then it? Similar to the one cent.
Okay. Other discussion, amendments? Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With Councilman Morgan voting nay, motion passes.
Oh, was that the last one? I think my eyes are cross-eyed.
You got any more in your pocket, Charlie?
No, it doesn't. Talk about vertical assessment district.
Oh, listen.
The next, the next meetings of the city council will be a budget work session to be held in the council's meeting room immediately following this meeting, and a regular council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, June sixth, twenty seventeen, in the council chambers. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into the regularly scheduled work session.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huckabee, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you, this portion of the meeting is adjourned.